It is the Georgetown Scott County Planning Commission of July fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two at six P. M. Under Commission Business, the approval of the June minutes for the record. Currently, David Vest, Rhett Shirley, and who am I missing? Brad, oh, Brad Green is absent. So I need approval of the June invoices.
So move.
Got a motion by Mr. Mifflin, a second by Mrs. Singer. All in favor say aye. Aye opposed, motion carries. Approval of the, um, did I say the June ninth, twenty twenty-two minutes? I need a motion for the approval of the June ninth, twenty twenty-two minutes. Got a move, uh, approval, a motion by Dan Smith, second by Mr. Stone. All in favor say aye. Aye. Anybody oppose? Motion carries. Approval of the July fourteenth agenda. Not that I'm aware of, no changes. Got a motion by Mrs. Singer, second by Mr. Smith. All in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Items for postponement or withdrawal. I see one, we've got under Old Business, ZMA twenty twenty-two dash thirty-three, the Phil St. John property, that is postponed. So if you're here to hear that application, it is not going to be heard tonight. That's postponed. Anything else, Joe? That's it, correct? So I need, I guess, I don't need a motion for that. Under consent agenda, we do not have anything that's consent eligible. The application we have tonight has a couple variances, so it's not consent eligible. With that, it looks like we'll move into new business. Before we get started, we'll have our illustrious attorney swear anybody who's willing to speak in. So if you're going to speak tonight, or think you're going to speak tonight, please stand up and raise your right hand, and Charlie will swear you in.
Please. Do you swear affirm the statement to make tonight to be the truth to the best of your information and belief? I only have two names, I see three hands.
Oh, you need to go sign in. No, you just hit the button and it'll turn you on green. Yeah, no, um, Elise mentioned that you just need to push them and you'll see the green light, which will be on, it means you'll have a hot mic, so be careful what you say. Mary, yours isn't, we disconnected yours. Joe, the floor is yours.
All right, this is, uh, we're requesting preliminary development plan approval for a site on U. S. Twenty-five South at the county line. This property is zone B-two highway commercial. It was rezoned B-one for a long period of time, and two thousand two, it was rezoned to B-two highway commercial, which allows more, more uses than B-one. At that time, there were, there were some self, um, self-restricting conditions that the applicant proposed, and they were accepted and added to the conditions of approval of the original zone change. Those affect the property, and I'll get into that in a minute. So this is the site, it's currently gravelled, oh, it's got a lot of gravel laid down. It's used for temporary uses, utility type uses. Right now, there's a lot of pipe on the property. It's also used every year for firework stand, and occasionally other utilities use it for storage. It is a three-point-six-one acre parcel that was filled at one time, just west of Canerun Creek there. So it runs from basically Lau Road all the way back, almost to where you see the lagoon along twenty-five. They're just proposing to use pretty much the front half of it for this use, um, at this time. So the preliminary development plan that you have shows a new parking lot being added for, just for customer parking and traffic. Ten parking spaces just aligned with the existing paved entrance that KYT C. put in when they widened twenty-five about ten years ago. They put in this limited, these limited access points to this property. So they're utilizing the existing driveway, building a small parking lot for customer traffic, and then adding a little more gravel to existing gravel and using that for the shed storage. And then the Sunshine Grow Shop will be kind of centrally located on the site. And then they're putting, using a prefabricated building, or two, two buildings put together, one for bathrooms and one for office sales, um, use. They are proposing some landscaping. Our B-two requirement is, it requires perimeter landscaping where adjoining A-one property. But since this zoned area is part of a larger parcel right now, and it's under one ownership, that perimeter site landscaping can be waived. So they're not showing it, um, adjoining the creek there, where typically you'd see it for a B-two property. They are showing it to the south, a line of evergreen trees. And, um, one of the, one of the conditions, that zone change that was added to this property is that they follow the U. S. Twenty-five Small Area Plan that we did, was done in oh-one, and we updated it in thirteen, I believe. And that, that asked for twenty-five-foot landscape buffer along twenty-five for any commercial property, just to kind of beautify the, the main entrance corridor to Scott County. They are showing that twenty-five-foot landscape buffer. At this point, they're not showing any landscaping in that. But there are trees that KYT C., the state transportation planted. They planted group, groupings of trees and, and shrubs along twenty-five, all through that's the southern Scott County corridor. There are two groupings of trees on either side of the main entrance. And those are actually in the right-of-way, I believe, not within this landscape buffer. But they're utilizing that for, for some screening. And my recommendation is that they, they add some hedges, and, um, just to supplement the, the trees, just to provide a little more screening from twenty-five. So as far as the, the parking lot, um, it's, it's of a size that we don't require interior landscaping within it. It's got to be at least twenty spaces or eighteen-hundred square feet to require interior landscaping. But it is big enough to require perimeter landscaping. So they're not showing any perimeter landscaping around the parking lot interior to the site. So they will need a variance for that. And I'm, I'm suggesting that I would support that variance, along with the other variance, um, for the gravel, which is actually in a, a third variance that I didn't, I didn't put the gravel variance in there originally, but we should probably add that in there, um, because we have required that, a variance for gravel on other commercial sites in the past. So, um, I am suggesting that we would support, staff would support the variance to the perimeter VUA landscaping and to the use of the prefabricated shed for an office and bathrooms, which was the self-restricted, um, condition that the applicant put on there at the zone change stage. I think the, the use of the sheds for the office kind of make, goes along with the whole, the overall type of use that's going to be there, the landscaping business and the shed sales. Those are typically using prefabricated small office, um, buildings or small sheds or structures for their offices. So I, I, um, I'm in support of the variances, um, with, I guess, with the, with the condition that they, instead of the interior landscaping around the parking lot, they add some supplemental hedges to twenty-five, just to provide a little more screening. And then, um, I've, I've put a couple images, well, this is basically where the existing trees are. Well, the trees in the front are actually on the right-of-way, I believe, although I didn't, um, I didn't verify that onsite by, by walking the site. But, um, I'm pretty sure the state put all the trees on the right-of-way. But it, the two kind of green areas, I'm suggesting they maybe add some hedges there to provide some screening. And maybe they can move them, move that one over to in front of where the, where the, um, the sheds are. But just some in these areas, and just kind of duplicating some of the other hedges that the state already put on twenty-five and kind of tie it in together, and it would provide some screening. It's not too high that you can't see the, the sheds, but it just kind of softens that as you drive through it. And these are just some that, if you've driven twenty-five, you can see these. They've gotten pretty big, um, recently. There's some on the, on the, um, transformer, um, fact, former transformer factory there, too. But up and down, they've just placed them kind of where there's, where there were existing uses, just to kind of soften the noise, I think. So we are, I am recommending approval with the two variances and a third variance for the gravel, use of gravel for the storage, the shed storage areas. And then the two, I guess, condition two would be the one that's, um, specific to the site, where hedge screening should be added to the twenty-five-foot landscape buffer to supplement the existing trees that are there. So that's, that's all I had. We are recommending approval with those conditions.
Any questions for Joe?
Yeah, I would add, we've got two of them numbered, I would add a third for gravel, use of gravel for the sheds. Yes.
Any questions for Joe? If not, the applicant going to speak? Brent, I guess that would be, looks like you.
Yeah, Brent Combs, thoroughbred engineering, they'll, is here also, if, if you need to ask his name. Yeah, we're fine with those conditions. Joe might be right, I was thinking that the gravel variance is usually more for, when it's a VUA area, actually have vehicles driving on it. In this case, if, if, I'm sure you've seen lots of places where sheds are, they sell sheds, and they just stay there until somebody buys one, and then they come in and haul it off, so. But to be safe, yeah, we can, if you don't mind doing the variance for that, that'd be good. Yeah, we're here to answer any questions.
As I say, the parking lot's paved, so the majority of the cars are going to be in the parking lot. You know, you won't have many people driving on the gravel, except for maybe to hook up, occasionally move them around, but other than that, you'll be all right. Any questions for Brent?
So we've got all that, uh, pipe there now for the, for the sewer project on down the road there. So I'm assuming the, the timing on this development won't be until they have finished with that. Is that a fair assumption to make, or?
Well, yeah, there, there is some timing, because the, both, uh, Shed Squad and the Sunshine Grow have to be off their current spot, what is it, August? End of August. So, I, I'm sure, you know, they can at least get on the, the pipe is already off of the southern end. And so maybe there's a little bit of overlap, but I'm, I'm guessing it'll, at the rate these guys are moving on the sanitary, I think it'll be all right. But yeah, there is, they do need to get moved.
Mr. Smith, Harold says, uh, also represents the Country Cabbage Group. We're part of our arrangement with Mr. Dwyer, our, our lease and option of purchase. It addresses the issue of the pipes. Our, the idea is, is that, that if, what space we need, they would move them on down. That they, that we're trying to accommodate them to, so, so they can get their, the sewer project done. And they, they're going to, if we needed that space moved to begin our development, they would move some pipe, still keep it located there for them to finish their project in a timely manner. But we're, that, it's been a pretty good working relationship with everybody involved, and the pipes will be moved as necessary, but we're hoping that they keep moving along, and it'll happen on some.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sims. Any other questions for the applicant or the attorney? If not, I guess we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion for approval of PDP two thousand twenty-two thirty-five, uh, with the three variances, which includes the addition of the variance for the use of the gravel for the display area.
So we've got a motion by Mrs. Singer. Uh, we got a second by Mr. Smith, I'll take a roll call. Uh, Mr. Mifflin?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Singer?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, motion carries. You can go ahead and sign your document with, uh, Mr. Perkins there. And, uh, the only other things on the agenda, we got the update on the comprehensive plan, so Matt's going to give us that. And we are, we did give you a time limit, did we not?
Yeah, uh, just, yeah, brief update on the comprehensive plan, um, for the, especially for those of you that are not on the steering committee. But we did have our, a public meeting in June, we got a lot of good feedback. We do have upcoming public meetings, uh, in Sadieville and Stampin' Ground. I will be in Sadieville next Tuesday at five P. M., and in Stampin' Ground on the twenty-eighth at five P. M. So, you know, if you all know anybody living in those areas, you know, even outside the cities, that would be interested in attending, or, you know, giving us input about, you know, the future of Scott County, feel free to let them know. We do, you know, for anybody who's not able to make those meetings, uh, we do have a survey up on our website right now, where people can submit feedback on the draft goals and objectives. So we're, we're still accepting comments on those, uh, today, and, you know, and even past these, probably through the end of the month, at least, I would assume.
And I'll try to be a both if I can.
Yeah, that would be excellent. So that's, I mean, that's, that's all I had for today on the comprehensive plan update. Would you like me to go over the, um, the campground?
Yeah, so just, and I don't know if you mentioned this, we're not going to have a July meeting, uh, here in town. You did.
Yeah, for the, uh, yeah, I, yeah, I guess I could go over that, too. The steering committee for the comprehensive plan will not meet in, in July. We're kind of focusing more on, on those public meetings that are upcoming. So yeah, the steering committee will not meet on July, I guess it would be two weeks from this last Tuesday. Yeah, yeah, we'll meet in August.
So next on there is the campground regulations.
Yeah, so, uh, as I mentioned at workshop, um, fiscal court asked us to take a look at campground regulations. I know there were some, some concerns, uh, at one point, and, and maybe still ongoing, about the potential campground, um, you know, on the Woodford County, Scott County border. So they just wanted to make sure that, you know, if we do have regulations regarding campgrounds, that they can be a little more, I guess, certain about, you know, what those outcomes will be, what those, um, uses would, would end up looking like, and how they might impact, or, or hopefully not impact adjoining property owners. So, um, we, we looked at that, I gave you all a sheet, I'm going to go over some of this briefly. So the, as, as we talked about at workshop, um, the, the zoning ordinance currently refers to these as, as mobile home camping areas. And I think it's an excellent suggestion that we maybe relabel those, or, you know, amend that definition. Uh, just to reflect that, you know, it's, it's pretty rare that anyone would, uh, call them that today, um, if, if ever. Just so that, you know, when people are looking for it, you know, we're using the terms that are most commonly used. Uh, as far as, as far as the, the current regulations, you know, they're, they're currently a conditional use in the B-two district. And then in any zone, they are allowed as a conditional use, as an accessory to a recreational, like a major recreational use. So I think what, what we had kind of been exploring, the idea, um, in our discussions with fiscal court, was, you know, if they're going to be a lot, if there's going to be some, a large, um, you know, campground in the agricultural areas in particular, you know, maybe it would make more sense, instead of just being a conditional use permit process, maybe there should be a zone change, just because, you know, we can, we can make sure that, um, you know, it gets that, that public hearing before the planning commission, sort of for that use to get approved. There's, you know, we have larger notification requirements for projects that go for zone changes than we do for conditional use permits, things like that. So more people in the community would have that opportunity to, to get an official notice and, and have their opinions voiced. So, uh, what I'd looked at was the A-one R zoning district. It's an agricultural recreational district that we, that we already have on the books. It's very lightly used, I think Deer Lake and, and One Preserve Tract are the only areas in the county that have ever used that zoning district. And then as a recreational district, you know, a recreational use like, uh, like a campground seems like a good fit. We would have to make some adjustments to the ordinance in order, in order to make that work. But I wanted to point out a couple of the things that I thought were kind of important, or, you know, make for good fits. You know, we're always looking for opportunities where we can preserve farmland. And I think some of the items in the A-one R district, such as item number one, you know, looking for areas that are, where prime farmland or prime soils are not a majority of, of the, of the area. I think that would go a long way towards, you know, maybe looking to, uh, you know, keep some of those, or I guess reduce development pressure on some of those, those farmland, uh, some of the existing prime farmland we have in the community. The, the district already has a requirement that, um, outside of a caretaker, there cannot be any full-time residences. So, you know, some of the neighbors could be at least a little more assured that, you know, if a, a mobile home or a campground community came, uh, came through under these regs, you know, that a full, you know, nobody would be living there full-time outside of, you know, somebody who actually works there. It wouldn't become a, a full-time residence. As far as the, the density, you know, I'd, I'd done some research, um, on, on what level of density these types of developments typically have, since we only really, I mean, for the most part, we only have Whispering Hills that was developed in the last, you know, twenty years. I don't know of any other ones that have been developed in Scott County. So I looked around at other communities, and it seems like they kind of, they kind of come in around ten units an acre. And so that seems somewhat reasonable, considering that, you know, all these units are smaller than a house. You know, they, um, you know, they're, they're temporary, you know, they're, they're, they're here for a short while, and then they move, you know, camp somewhere else. I'm, I'm open if, if the commission has, has feedback to, to change that. But I think that would be an appropriate density level, assuming that they were, uh, connected to public sewer. Being the agricultural, in an agricultural area, I think it probably would be wise, if they're not on a public sewer, that we maintain that one per five-acre density requirement that we have for, uh, for homes. As far as setbacks, I'm not proposing any changes, other than what's already there, uh, in the A-one district. We would recommend, we would require public water and, and approval from the fire department, uh, obviously, for, for any new development in the county. And then the last thing I wanted to touch on was the screening. And I, as I mentioned at workshop, I leaned heavily on the, the screening requirements that we have in the cluster regulations already. They, they do seem to provide a good, uh, I guess, landscaping, uh, buffer between, between, I guess, more of an urban-style use in, in, you know, in the cluster lots, where you've got these, you know, one-to-two-acre lots, um, in agricultural areas. And that's accomplished with, uh, you know, the, the plank fence with the diamond mesh wire and then double row of trees. And I think as Commissioner Mifflin pointed out on Monday, I think it would be a good idea to amend both the language that we might potentially use here, uh, if we move forward with this, and in, in the cluster regs, um, you know, to, to allow for removal of invasive species, should they get into these preserve, you know, vegetation preservation easements. I forget exactly what it calls, um, the easement, but a preservation easement is, I guess, what it calls it. But, um, that's, that's really all I had today, is I wanted to let you all know, you know, we, we put this together because we had gotten some questions from fiscal court about, you know, if we did make some changes to our regs regarding campgrounds, you know, what might that look like? And, and really, I wanted to present this to you all as well, uh, just so that we can, I guess, start a discussion. And if you all have any feedback today, I'd be more than happy to take that. If you all think of something later, you know, feel free to reach out to me.
Thank you, Matt. Any questions for Matt, comments? If hopefully you had a chance to read over this here over the last, you know, week or so.
The fire protection down there, does the fire department, uh, I realize now, we, we have water lines running to most areas of, of the county where we can get a, uh, fire hydrants in place. But if, if there is a, a large source of water, a large pond or lake, do they take that into consideration? The fire department?
That's, that's a good question. I don't know, I don't know the answer. I, I think in some cases, they, they could or have taken that into consideration, uh, at least in the past. I know that they are, you know, looking, especially when we get some of these agricultural subdivisions that come to the planning commission, they are, um, looking for more hydrants, uh, throughout the county.
Any other questions, comments?
Just one, Mr. Chairman. Are we leaving the, uh, conditional use in the B-two, or is that coming out?
Yeah, I mean, at this time, I'm not proposing changing that part of it.
I'd like to see that considered, I mean, B-two's gets to be crowded and all, and kind of busy anyway. And I don't know, maybe if you kind of think about that as a whole, though, maybe that's something we really do need. But, boy, it'd be kind of nice to get them removed a little bit and cut down on some of that congestion, if we don't need to do that. Just, just a question.
I mean, I would, I would be open to that, I mean, it would, I guess it would.
Well, as a conditional use, that, there's so much, I mean, when we took up, uh, Pat Jewett's place.
Whispering Hills.
Yeah, it just, boy, the considerations there were just enormous. And I'd have felt a whole lot better if that had been done solely, you know, and with lots of staff consideration, all that, rather than a report and then discussions before the board. Uh, I mean, I think they did a pretty nice job, actually, but it just, boy, uh, anyway, that, and you put something, not, obviously not that big, would ever go in B-two, I think the property would be way too expensive. But, uh, get them somewhat removed, it just seems like that's a better deal than maybe in the R-two. But, boy, there'd be a ton of things to consider, and maybe conditional use is not the way to consider it.
Okay.
Can I have a question?
Yeah.
Trevor, on a place like, we put a review, I don't know, but how, how's the septic work?
That's, I mean, that, that's a good question. I mean, that would be a question probably out of the health department. I will say, um, for, for, uh, I guess, campgrounds or mobile home camping areas, they, they go through a dual process. So they go through a local review process, and then there is also, um, a process they have to go through with the state that involves the health department directly for both, uh, you know, RV campgrounds. But the same process also applies if you wanted, uh, you know, a mobile home, a new mobile home park, you know, like, uh, spindle top, that we're, you know, kind of tangentially discussing earlier today. You know, there's, there is, there are parallel review processes that, that involve the health department directly, and on the septic, I will always defer to the health department.
Excuse me, do most of those, because I know, I think, Charlie, you said you use those kinds of facilities. The only time I've ever really heard about that much is they've got places where you can dump, you know, like huge septic tanks or something. They don't actually have septic syst, or sewer systems, do they?
I'm assuming most of them are on la, on the city.
On the city or something?
Yeah, line, just like out of Camping World has a dump station for their customers, and it's hooked up to the, to the city.
Yeah, because I think that'd be a lot of waste to other ones.
Yeah, because I think that'd be a lot of waste the other ways. I mean, that'd be almost too much for a septic system.
You may have 20 people leaving the campground. A lot of campgrounds anymore have, you're hooked up at your campsite and so it's on a sewer line.
Well, but Whispering Hills is not on the sewer line.
I can, I can double check. I feel, I think that they are on sewer. I think that was a condition.
Back over the hill toward the, the.
Towards 25.
Plant that used to be up there next to.
I think it was a condition from when they got their, I think when they got their conditional use permit.
Because I didn't recall.
I think there was a condition that they connect to the sewer.
Okay.
I'll double check.
One more quick question for you, Matt. And item number six, it's on the second page at the top, in that second sentence, adverse impact, you know, maybe we need to define that. What is what I consider an adverse impact on my property, somebody else may not consider an adverse impact. Do we need to define that a little more, Charlie? How? It's kind of a.
I think.
We might use, and, and I haven't really thought about this, it's an excellent question. There is some language in the conditional use permitting statute that talks about if they can be, and I can't even tell you what that is right now, but they talk about that kind of impact or can be compatible or with certain conditions can be made compatible with the existing area. And, and maybe we could look at that language and see if we can broaden this a little bit.
Yeah.
Because you're right, adverse, I mean, that could be anything. I don't want to look at that.
Yeah.
That's an adverse impact. So, you know, I, I think we need to have some kind, if nothing else, maybe some examples that the review needs to consider, like is done in the, you know, the variance statute.
Yeah. I, I was going to say, I guess what I was going to add to that was, I mean, I guess firstly, that, that's in the existing language for the A1R district. So, yeah, that would be, I guess, amending the, the ordinance as it exists today. But I, I think it's also good to point out that that's, you know, if we were requiring a zone change, the, the commission has a good amount of discretion at that, at the zone change time to determine what, I guess, sort of on a case-by-case basis, depending on, you know, what, what the use is, what the situation is with the surrounding properties, you have a lot of discretion to determine at that point what an adverse impact is versus what isn't.
We would need to make findings of fact to support, if we said there's adverse and we turned something down, we'd need to make findings of fact as to what those adverse impacts were.
Yeah.
But it would be kind of nice to have a list of things that the commission should consider.
Yeah, I, I agree.
Because otherwise, sometimes judges think that discretion is a little too broad.
Yeah, I mean, you could back up to a solar farm and back up next to a thoroughbred horse farm and adverse impacts could be totally different.
Yeah.
Just by saying adverse impact.
Would this apply equally to a, I would call it a more traditional campground? It doesn't have hookups, it's not RVs coming there, but let's say somebody has 10 acres and they decide to open a campground with tents, no sewer hookups, they have a bath house. Would this apply equally to that or there are exceptions in here that would make those?
That, I mean, that's a good question. And, and I think that's, I think, I think that's, that's, that's one thing I kind of went back and forth on. I think that's one area where I'm, I'm really open to input from the commission and from fiscal court as far as do they want that to apply to basically all camping, whether it's, I guess, more tent camping and RV camping? Or should this apply only to RV camping?
Well, we've got.
I don't, I don't have a strong preference.
About three or so little, small scale, like, like you're describing, campgrounds out in the county. Much of what would apply to, to an RV kind of ground would not apply there.
Yeah.
And it may be that's a second category we would want to add at some point because we've been flying semi-blind on those conditional use considerations, although they don't seem to have a great deal of impact. But we certainly could get an application where, you know, where they might.
And I would think the impact of that would be much less than having an RV park.
I would, I would think so. I would think so, yeah. The, the amount of, the amount of light and noise would, would probably be less.
Until the lady proposed that 36 square feet viewing screen, you know, high, high definition, yeah, neighbors kind of balked at that one.
Yeah.
One, one thing though, just, just as a little matter of history, the adverse impacts, that was drawn up for Deer, whatever it is.
For Deer Lake, yeah.
And, and there was going to be no, I mean, they were going to put in quarter million dollar homes at that time and none of it's going to be seen by anybody anyway. So maybe it's time to, you know, check the language because we could have been really lax then and it wasn't going to hurt.
Any other comments, questions for Matt? All right, thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
It looks like the only, well, that's really it, I think, the only thing we've got.
Can I add one thing? I realized I didn't turn my.
No. Your mic's off.
No, it's on now.
No, it's off. We turned it off.
Shut up. I realized when I made that motion, I didn't have my mic on. So I don't know if I need, if it was loud enough, if my voice is loud enough or if I need to restate it.
Yeah, you should be okay.
My voice is pretty loud. Just make a jerk.
Your, your voice is loud.
I wasn't going to say that, Charlie. It was killing me.
That's my husband.
Side thick, motion adjourned.
So moved.
Motion seconded. All favors, aye? Aye. Thanks, Chairman. Good job.